Yeah, I wish I could read the separation of the scene from five kilometers to get one. She's like, that doesn't hit my, my, my house. She wants to basically get water now and then ask others.
And she uttered a statement that she did on the twelve years ago. And it's not even forty percent. Which was... Don't make a bad decision about the spirits, you're in the spirits, you're in worse. I was appalled by that. You either move it or you get sued. That's right. Oh, that's sad. Never said anything before. Go, 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 Sam. If, if you want, I'll leave it to you. I'm gonna see if you can hold it, I'll leave it to you, I'll leave it to you. Second. But just in light of this, we were having people in perfect form and strangers. That's why I'm so... Oh, really? We miss you.
I miss you too.
Oh, my goodness. I just, I remember somebody mentioning that to me. Right, on the main drag or that old side street or the bar? Yeah, yeah. So they're like there. What, take that, take that. I just, when I was just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older. And possibly... I, I said... I want her to be personal. I don't have last actions. So the idea is to adjust transition rates or how do you transition something in a way? It doesn't leave the person behind. But it's pretty, it's pretty clear at least. I know the initial use of it. Yeah. Yeah. Like I've worked with it. But if it can, it becomes this. What I saw, I understand. I understand. I mean, just... I just, I just joking there, it was, it was very, you know. Young, delayed, older.[984.13]
Our Passenger Information Technology. Moved by the mayor, seconded by councillor Skelly. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Five point four. Hamilton Wentworth Catholic District School Board Liaison Committee. Councillor Skelly, councillor Vanderbeek. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing delegations. No stranger to this chamber, Vic Durjevich. How's that for pronouncing in the good old fashioned Yugoslavian way, Vic? Vic Durjevich, Nikola Tesla Education Corporation, respecting the 120th anniversary of Hamilton's Power Turned On. Vic, glad to see you again, and it's always wonderful that you're promoting Mr. Tesla, because after all, he was way ahead of Mr. Edison, but somehow, in North America, Mr. Edison seemed to get greater limelight until people like you showed up. The floor is yours, Vic. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a great pleasure to be here. Please bear with me. I've even cut down some of the slides and will gloss over a few of them because of time constraints. So if I just happen to go over a few seconds, please bear with me. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to you about Hamilton's 120th anniversary of the Electric City, forgotten history piece. I really won't go over the history of Hamilton, how it became the Electric City, but we do have the timeline here for you. This was all made possible when Nikola Tesla patented his whole system for generators, motors, and transformers to send power across great distances. Now, we'll jump to 1894, and by this time Niagara Falls is building a power generating station on the American side, and we noticed that the Moet government has given away the right to the water supply on the Canadian side to an American company. Mr. Patterson, one of the five Johns, is in discussion with Niagara Falls Electric Power Company, and he cannot buy the power, not even for double. The price is so high that we, as Canadians, will not even be able to benefit from it. We also note that even the oldest inhabitants of Hamilton, as been noted in 1894, will see electricity in their homes and power businesses in the community. Mr. Patterson is now in discussions with two or three of the New York capitalists. These are from the papers of the Spectator of the period. By 1896, they're already in direct consultation with Nikola Tesla, who reviews the whole system that they're planning to use, and he gives them the green light and approves that this system will work. Now, history, of course. Power is turned on, August 25, 1898. There's our 120th anniversary. On the grand opening of the Deshue Power Generating Station, it's noted that this will go down in the annals of history as a Red Letter Day. What they accomplished was unaccomplishable before this. This was an incredible first for Canada. So, Hamilton, in the late 1800s, early 1900s, was a leader in innovation. Businesses established and expanded here in Hamilton due to the cheapest power anywhere. Manufacturing processes were developed and implemented right here. I don't want to go really that much about Antec. You've heard of about us, but just to give you a few things that we have delivered. We have funded fully the Nikola Tesla Boulevard. We are now funding awards in schools. We are going to the Bay Area Science and Engineering Fair. We've already awarded 47 awards there. We are a platinum sponsor at that event in 2017, and again, we're going there in 2018. We have a $10,000 scholarship, fully funded already, for five years at McMaster University, and we present it to over 2,000 students in school and at fairs. Hamilton Historical Board has recognized Hamilton as the Electric City. Here is the plaque that finally graces the area next to Kings Forest, where the last standing tower is present. So, what is our request to the city? Well, our request is really simple. We want you to formally recognize 2018 as the 120th anniversary of the Hamilton being the Electric City. We requested city actively promote and participate in the events that we're hoping to celebrate this accomplishment. We're asking, if possible, to waive fees where we are using Hamilton facilities, Steaming Technology Museum, and you'll see a mention of here in City Hall. And maybe hold press conferences to explain about this 120th anniversary. So, our plan is really officially to next month, to hold a little get-together outside and invite city staff and the Deshue Power Generating Station and ourselves to be present here to officially launch the 120th anniversary celebration. We will then move on to the Tesla Electric City Festival that will be held at the Hamilton's Steam and Technology Museum, followed by the Tesla Electric City Gala on October 7, 2018, in Wynona, Vines States. This is a picture of a sellout crowd, over 500 people that supported the Nikola Tesla Boulevard. The Deshue Power Generating Station will be open to the public. We've negotiated that with them. October 13, public will get a chance to go in. At the 110th anniversary, 5,000 people showed up. There wasn't a single report in any media here in Hamilton of any Hamilton participation, and yet this is our history, not St. Catherine's history. So, Hamilton, this is a call to action. Residents, discover your own history. How and why are you here in Hamilton? Corporate world, does your company have a direct link to this period? For example, Bank of Hamilton, CIBC, they funded the Deshue Power Generating Station. Caterack Power Company, Hamilton Hydro, Elektra now. The Radios, HSR. Dominion Foundries and Steel Company. Well, right now, it's Asler Metal de Fasco. Steel Company of Canada, oh, Stalco again. All right? So, this is a call to action. We all have a role to play and to participate. Residents can discover Hamilton's history and your own. Corporate, sponsor events and donate to the public art project. Hamilton School Board, teach our students our history so they can be inspired. Media, report on our history and the celebrations. Mayor should not have to answer the question, why Nikola Tesla Boulevard? This is yours to discover. Be proud of it. We are, of course, working now fundraising for the public art project that's called Hamilton, the Electric City, Nikola Tesla, and the Five Johns. All our fundraising and all our events will be going directly into that. This is an approved project. Reminder to everybody listening that Antec is a registered charity, so any donations coming to us goes directly to this and is available for income tax credits, and that the city will be matching these donations to the $100,000. We are also working to name the new school, Nikola Tesla Secondary School. I have over 8,000 petitions on this, and we're growing more. All right? So, give Tesla one minute of your time. Sign the petition. Take the survey. Tell the school board what name you'd like to see. Hamilton is first in innovation. We truly can make claim to that. So we need to go back and look at our history and really home in on that. We have a first-class university. We have an innovation park that the council has already supported, and this will both attract research funds and businesses. So, I urge Hamilton to look at that, and I think your council here is very familiar with our movement up the chain of priority, how relevant we are for innovation right now. And if anybody doesn't recognize what this is, this is a motor that comes from one of my power tools, but this is at the heart of everything that Tesla has done for us and for the city. Our homes, our businesses are all powered by motors and generators like this, and we've got, every house must have eight or 10 appliances that are built on this principle. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Vic. Excellent presentation, and again, thank you for keeping Tesla's name in the forefront to help catch up and surpass Mr. Edison, who maybe had more of a business acumen, if you will, but people like you are keeping Tesla in the forefront. I'm going to turn now to our speakers. Questions or comments of Mr. Durjevich? Mayor Eisenberger.
Well, thank you, and thank you very much for your presentation. Your passion for this is clear and evident, and I'm much appreciated. And I would hope that we could refer this, I think, great idea to celebrate, you know, what many have called Electric City for quite a long time, actually, to our staff to start looking at and talking about how do we participate in this kind of a celebration. I think it's worthy. There's enormous, you know, and great history here, and certainly the ability for us to celebrate electricity, you know, unto itself is something wonderful, and the very fact that Hamilton had so many firsts in terms of innovation and technology. I just got a book Margaret Houghton put out, three volumes of Hamilton firsts. This is definitely one of them, top of the list, and there are many others, and I think those, all of those are worth celebrating. So, Mr. Chair, I would, you know, based on the recommendations that he put forward, I would move at the appropriate time that we refer them to our staff and have them to get together and have a discussion about how we can participate and help reflect that great electrical electricity history in our city, including electrified trams. Downtown Hamilton. They started off by pulling them by horse, then got them electrified, actually.
That's one of the elements that they needed power for.
Yep.
Was for those trams.
That's right. That's right. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Chair, I think, I really think, you know, the passion that this great organization has in Mr. Durjevich is just amazing, and I think it's worthy of us to reflect on that and participate in something that I think could be a very, very nice celebration of power and electricity, you know, and the firsts that happened right here in Hamilton. So at the appropriate time, if you come to me, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll come back to you to not only receive, but refer the requests for support of city to our staff to report back to us. Next on the list, councillor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and certainly always a pleasure having Victor in chambers, and the Nikola Tesla organization has done a tremendous job, having the honor of being at the opening of the renaming of a section of Burlington Street a few years ago, and proudly this organization, it was totally fundraised. It did not cost the city one cent. So, it's a phenomenal movement, very proud of them, and the whole thing is to promote what Mr. Tesla has done, not only for Canada but around the world as far as technology. So I'm certainly very supportive. This is a panoramic view of downtown Hamilton in 1913. I think it was a centennial, and it does show how we were the electrified city at that time. That's why I have that in the office mounted. So I do appreciate everything here, and I'm certainly, the mayor jumped on it. I'd be happy to second his motion and see whatever staff we can do to continue the movement and promotion of Mr. Tesla and technology. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Pearson. Nice historical plaque you've got there in your office. So Vic, the understanding is, we're going to receive your presentation. The mayor and councillor Pearson want to, with council support, refer to staff, see what we can do to offset the costs and support you further. How does that sound?
It sounds excellent, and I hope that you will all be joining us at the various festivities. We are doing the, as we said already, the Electric Festival. That is definitely a goal. I would hope to see most of you at the gala, because that really is going to highlight in October quite a big thing, and the whole concept really is, we need to get media to really educate the public. That's important. I agree with, when I was in chambers, with the mayor there being asked that question all the time. We shouldn't have to have him answer that question. We, our general public should know, and that's why we're going into the schools to educate the children and to teach them and inspire them.
You are marvelous. Well done, Victor. Okay. Thank you, Victor. Moved by the mayor, seconded by councillor Pearson. Not only to receive, but refer the requests for city support to staff. Director Bradford? Any comment at this time? We're just going to refer to you to report back to us, director. Director Bradford?
Through the chair, I just wanted to let you know that we have been working with Vic for quite a while, and that staff has been working with him on the festival at Steam and Technology. We've also committed to Vic that any of the other events that they have, if staff are available, will go down with displays, that type of thing. The one thing that we, as staff, can't do is waive any of the fees. So the two fees that they're looking for is the rental at Steam and Technology and the rental costs for their reception here at City Hall.
So, thank you, Director Bradford. My apologies. Thank you for mentioning those two. As mayor, would you include that, that those two fees be waived in your motion, please? Seconded by councillor Pearson. With all that included, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Vic, I think we're on our way. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Director Bradford, you'll still report ultimately back to let us know the whole aspect of our city support. Thank you, Anna. Okay, 7.1, stop presentation, Stephanie, we're on to amendments to the Environmental Remediation and Site Enhancement Program, our wonderfully raised program. I'd like to call upon planner Edward John to present 7.1, and then we'll open it up to any Q and A's. Edward, always good seeing you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good morning, Chair, members of committee and public. I will begin my presentation by acknowledging that this was very much a team effort. I do like to hug the limelight, but I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the great work of Urban Renewal, in particular Judy Lamb and Meredith Plant, who've really assisted in the update here to the ARAZE Community Improvement Plan. I'll do a quick background overview. Obviously, the city of Hamilton retained a consulting team to prepare the Bayfront Industrial Area Renewal Strategy and included a focused review of the ARAZE programs. The review included the historical program uptake, the economic impacts, administrative and program issues, and best practices across several other municipalities. The original CIP approved in 2001. It was actually one of the first brownfield CIP in Canada, so Hamilton are known to be leaders in this respect and have been recognized as such. We have reviewed and updated it previously in 2005 and 2010. In 2005, it was expanded to West Harbour and the rest of the urban area, and in 2010, added downtown area. The current ARAZE programs include a study grant program, a tax assistance program, a redevelopment grant program, the downtown West Harbour front remediation loan, and the municipal acquisition and partnership program. Here's just a quick overview of where the CIP includes. Obviously, in purple is the Bayfront area, green is the West Harbour area, and the yellow being the rest of the urban area. In terms of an overview, there was a best practice conducted, and once again, Hamilton fared very well in terms of the programs offered and in terms of the assistance provided, with only a few of the municipalities offering additional programs, programs which, when we reviewed through this process, decided not to uptake. In terms of the success of the programs, obviously, you can see here in terms of the continual uptake over time that our ESG applications have taken. So these are the study grants. Just understanding where those grants and where those geographical locations that are being studied are, you can see from this pie chart, while the larger section is obviously the rest of the urban area, when you compare that to the kind of geographical land masses of the downtown and the West Harbour, you can see there's a very balanced approach to site remediation throughout Hamilton. In terms of those sites that are receiving the remediation grant, it's not as significant as an uptake as the study grants, and obviously, there's some processes and requirements as you do the study that has reluctantly ended up in some grants not pursuing the actual remediation grant application. Through our process, we did look at any and all options that we can to encourage the ultimate remediation. In terms, once again, in the location of those areas, we have, once again, a fairly balanced approach in terms of where those grants are taking place. Some of the 20 ERG projects completed to date, these are some of the great figures that are coming out of our program. You know, the nine million plus in grant funding commitment from the city has actually resulted in over 110 million in actual construction value, which provides a leverage ratio of 11 to 1. Eleven of those ERG projects paid upwards of 5 and 1/2 million in DCs, over and above the eligible remediation costs applied against the DCs that were obviously applied payable under the ERG program. And then finally, out of the 19 ERG projects, they have paid nearly a million and a half in building permit fees. Once again, overviewing some of the successes, and through our consultant, we were able to come up with these charts that really demonstrate the success of the project. We have the assessment value, and we've determined the base year average, the increase due to general market value, and then the increase due to the actual ERG projects. Similarly, for the property taxes, same process in terms of methodology was done to demonstrate really the importance of the ERG process in terms of property taxes, with a significant property tax increase due to the success of these programs. In terms of those successes, over 300 acres of land has been studied, with a total assessment increased due to the ERG in excess of 129 million. For those sound bites, every $1 contributed by the city has generated $11.10 in private sector construction. Remediation and redevelopment approved of approximately 210 acres of brownfield land, with 123 acres, almost 60% of approved land remediated to date. But we don't want to just rest on our laurels, and obviously, we are looking for improvements and enhancements. There are several tweaks to some of the existing programs, increasing some of the costs for two studies per project. We are looking to reset the date to which two studies can be submitted, and we are looking at some administrative changes. But most notably, the changes are with the ability to now cover designated substances and hazardous material surveys. So for people like myself, that's the asbestos contamination that we are finding, particularly in some of our former institutional and some of our heritage buildings. We do consider that the application of these programs to those uses will continue the success that we've had in protecting and preserving historic buildings and obviously redevelopment in our former institutional areas. And then finally, that the interest rate for the downtown Hamilton West Harbour front remediation loan program be decreased from prime minus 1% to 0%, but the loan repayment period be reduced from 10 years to 5 years. So that was a very brief overview of the great success that we've had to date, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Edward. We've got several speakers and questioners of your report and recommendation. First, councillor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Edward was similarly addressed yesterday with his inclusionary zoning presentation at Planning Committee, and we always appreciate not only his stellar appearance but his wonderful presentations. This is important work, and I'm glad you credited Edward, the many people, right off the top that informed this important work today. So through you, one of the things I, the other day I was looking at this, that kept running through my brain was innovations and remediation. I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer when we talk about, and you've presented the leverage ratio of 11 to 1 for every dollar, we're getting $11 back, and at the same time, we're, you know, from an environmental perspective, cleaning up longstanding brownfield properties. This has been undoubtedly a success, and since its inception, we've been a leader in many areas. So, and you can see from one of the, in the actual report of the many communities that have followed us since, but there have been a number of discussions we've had. Edward Vanderwijn in the Building Department, working closely with Peter Waterloo developer who's approved at the corner of John and Main Street, a former gas station, who's brought forward a concept on this, I guess it's almost like a pool membrane, and it's a very cost-effective way of dealing with the remediation issue at a severely toxic site when it's a former gas station. Are we able to work with, through our current programs, proponents on the innovation side of things? Do we cover that in our current ARAZE program? Through you, Chair.
Through the chair, to the councillor. Just a quick note, it's a different tie from yesterday.
And jacket.
And jacket, and jacket. Thank you. Certainly, when it comes to innovation, we've demonstrated we are receptive to different options, most notably that came through some of the recent development activity in the downtown was the concurrent review of building permits with the remediation process steps as it goes through the zoning. So I think we definitely have that appetite when we know that this is an evolving subject matter, and certainly, while not specified in the report, that's something that we've been responsive to.
And so, while it may not be, it may be foreign to us, we are open and actively working with proponents who do bring forward, from the outside, new and innovative ways to address it, and in turn, my assumption is, I mean, they're coming up with new and innovative ways, and we're working with them, as we are with this former gas station, as referenced on John and Main, because it's a cost savings to them, notwithstanding this wonderful opportunity here and there for different avenues to take with our ARAZE program. They have a major benefit in terms of savings on the actual development. So are we then, in turn, going to be able to utilize what we don't pay out to provide a broader menu, potentially, as it relates to this particular program? Through you.
Through the chair, to the councillor. If I understand the question correctly, yes, we can. Obviously, we have the capital funding available, and so as we approach each development application and each study grant process, we're able then to, you know, use any funds which aren't used for individual applications and put them back into the fund.
And finally, can you just explain the one slide? I forget which page, where we're going in the downtown West Harbour from 1% prime to 0, but shortening by half the payback period from 10 to 5 years. What was the line of thinking there? You may have mentioned it, but I may have missed it. Through you, Mr. Chair.
It was wonderful timing that through the chair, to the councillor, that I saw Judy Lamb approach the microphone.
Ah, perfect.
So I can look towards her.
I just gave Judy Lamb a great plug on the radio this morning. I did. If you read the Birmingham story, I assumed you had some part of that, but through you, Chair, to Judy. Judy, please.
Thank you. Thank you to the chair. The reason why we decided to drop, in terms of the loan programs that we have under Urban Renewal, the only program that still has a prime less 1 is the remediation loan, and usually what, they piggyback that program along with a tax grant. So if they use the Hamilton tax grant, it's a five-year amortization period. If they use the ERG, which is the redevelopment grant, it's a 10-year. So we thought, okay, we'll offset the drop in the interest rate, but we limit the amortization period, and that reduces the risk to the city.
Okay, great. I'm prepared to move the recommendations at the appropriate time, if you'd like to come back.
I will come back to you, councillor Farr. Thank you so much. Councillor Brenda Johnson, please.
Yep, thank you, and I'd be happy to second that. Could you please just go back to the map of the city, excuse me, for the area ago? So this is really pertaining to 8.1, but I wanted to show the map first. If you see, Bimbrock goes all the way up to Cemetery Road. That's that little blue line to the north, and yet, on our BIA geographical areas, it doesn't reach that far, and we're missing out on Armstrong's and O'Neill's equipment, which are huge commercial development in Bimbrock. So I just wanted to point that out, so when we come to 8.1, everybody will understand why we need to change the geographical boundary for the BIAs in the Bimbrock area. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks, councillor Brenda Johnson. I'll come to you for seconding the matter. Councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to refresh my memory. So the yellow area is entirely eligible for ARAZE grants, is it?
Through the chair, to the councillor, and that's correct.
What's the difference between the purple and the green? I know one's West Harbour, one's the old waterfront, and the yellow, is there different levels of grants, or are they loans in different colored areas?
Through the chair, to the councillor, there are different studies and options within the older industrial area. There are some programs which apply just to that, and then the remediation loan with respect to the West Harbour area. So there are slightly different programmable elements that are applicable to different geographical areas. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Really, is some a loan, some a grant, then?
Sorry, pardon?
Is some a loan and some of them a grant?
Through the chair, to the councillor, yes. Some are loans, some are grants, depending on the program itself.
The $10 million that we've committed, is that loans or grants?
Through the, I'll pass this one to Judy, just to confirm.
Judy, please.
Yes, when they were referring to the $11 million, that was tax grants.
It was grants. Where'd that money come from?
That would be based on, when we do estimate of the increase in taxes due to the development, it would be the difference between the pre and post-development taxes. So it's foregone future taxes until the remediation cost has been recovered, and then the grant ends.
Okay, so my last question then, just asking. We've seen a significant spike in real estate costs, particularly in the lower city, particularly downtown, similar to the waiver of DCs. I know we're phasing them out at 5% per year, which is going to take a long time to get there, 20 years, but we've seen property values in the lower city, particularly the downtown area, up 200, 300, 400%, and that's evident by the spike in assessment for those areas. So is this something that'll eventually sunset, similar to the DC exemptions? Judy?
In terms of sunsetting this program, we review this every five years, and it's at this point that we estimate whether you think the program should still exist. I think brownfields is one area where it's a huge cost that can deter a development of a property. So whether you're downtown or in the whole urban boundary of the city, it's a program that I think is a very important one to continue, encourage the development of previously underutilized or, you know, reach its potential of what it could be worth to the city.
Any stats on how many hectares or acres of brownfield land is still out there 10 years ago when the program started and now? Are we going up with brownfields inventory or down?
Well, in 2008 is when they did citywide, they hired a consultant to do a citywide inventory. Until then, we have not done a complete inventory. So so many things could have changed. Those properties that were assessed... Those properties that were assessed at that point could have been redeveloped, or there could have been other properties that's been recontaminated. So unless we undertook a major study, it would be hard to tell. I know what they're doing in the Bayfront as part of the Bayfront Strategy is they're going to look at updating that inventory, historical inventory within the Bayfront area.
I would expect that with the deal done with the Stokelands, the province backstopping the cleanup, and the West Harbour now underway, that we're going to lose a lot of our brownfields. And so my only seed I want to plant, do we really still need to go to the taxpayer to fund these cleanups? Or does the marketplace now permit the owners to do it on their own?
That's a good question. Judy or Edward? Either one for a comment on that, please.
I think just overall, sorry, the additional cost for remediating a property could be the difference that makes, you know, the cash flow work for that project. So if at some point, brownfields, you know, let's say the value of real estate is so high that a developer doesn't even care about the additional cost of brownfield remediation, then at that point, you know, I can see someday you might not need that program. I just don't feel that Hamilton is at that point.
Okay, because we experienced at the Lister Block where we acquired a piece of property. Can I talk about this value, or is that confidential?
What is that, councillor? Sorry?
We acquired the properties to do the addition to the Lister Block recently, and I think that's, that deal is closed, so it's probably public now.
Just keep it general then, how's that, councillor?
Well, we, okay, in that experience, we saw it go from worthless to worth millions of dollars per acre. And so that was an example of how much property values has spiked. And we, I suspect, I'd be shocked if we don't have a significant reduction in the amount of brownfields we have because of all the interest in the lower city, particularly in the downtown area. And so I just want to keep planting the seed. I know I've been on Glenn about DCs too. Why do we keep exempting DCs when it's the hot real estate market down here now? And of course, this cost, the loss of the revenue and those taxes is shared by the whole city, because we don't get that tax revenue. It's forgiven, if you will, the increase in taxes until this grant is paid back. That is money that could have come to office to reduce the levy. And so I'm going to keep poking at this until I can wake the bear up, because I understand why we did it, and it's been a great success, but when does it sunset? And I'm not getting answers to that yet. And it sounds like we haven't done an analysis of what's happened with our brownfields for 10 years now. And it'd be interesting to see, are we down 50% or are we down 5% in the amount of brownfields? Particularly if you pull the Stokelands out, which I believe is in the order of 800 acres, is no longer going to need to be cleaned up because the province is backstopping that. So I just, I just want to plant that seed.
So councillor, maybe we'll come back to you separately if you want to provide direction to staff to come back with that kind of comparator after 10 years.
Okay, let me see what my colleagues have to say, but yeah, I'd be interested maybe put in that motion.
Thank you, councillor. Questions, comments? Councillor Collins, please.
Thanks, and thanks to Edward again, another great presentation. And I think it should be noted that the tax incremental finance program that we had, we had to lobby for a number of years, the provincial government in the late 90s, to allow municipalities to undertake a program like the Erase Program. Tax incremental financing was one that was very common at the time in the United States, and if you attended FCM or other conferences in the late 90s, it was something that was being talked about, but no one really pursued it except our staff here and council here in Hamilton. And I think we should certainly give kudos to Mr. Everson, who is no longer with us, obviously, and Mr. Luc Pachoni, who were really pioneers in the whole issue of the Erase Program and the tax incremental financing process. And so I think it should be noted that this is probably one of the most successful programs we've had in the city for the last 10 years, maybe 15 years. I know that in speaking to Neil years ago, when we were in the early stages of implementing this program, there were municipalities from not just all over Ontario, but all over Canada, who were contacting our ECTV staff to ask about how it works and how, what the benefits are and what the cost is to a municipality. And certainly, I think the beauty of this program is that there's really no cash that's involved here. You're foregoing new tax revenues. And for many, and I can point to my own ward, which has probably been the largest beneficiary of this, I would look, you know, and point everyone to the Waxman, former Waxman Scrapyard, which was purchased by Smart Centers. And I know in my discussions with Smart Centers at the time, when they had their, they were undertaking their due diligence, the only reason they took on that project was because of the Erase Program. It allowed them to finance what was, I think, would be considered one of the most, if not the most contaminated properties in the city. And now we have obviously a hotel that's recently constructed, we have many box stores that are there, and they're looking to expand even further. So tremendous success with this program, and I just want to thank staff for really continuing to advertise this to the development community, not just here in Hamilton, but elsewhere. And I think, again, that kudo should be given to Mr. Everson and Mr. Pachoni, who were, again, pioneers in this program. And I think we won a number of awards just after amalgamation for this program, and rightfully so. And so I wanted to, with this in front of us today, just make sure that we're cognizant of the past in terms of how this came about. It took a lot of effort, a lot of lobbying to the provincial government, and it's been a success. So I think that should be noted this morning. And of course, planning staff and ECTV staff continue to do good things with this program. And I think we still continue to get calls from municipalities from time to time regarding the same. So thanks for the presentation, and I'm certainly supportive of what's in front of us here today.
Thanks for the historical recollection as well, councillor. First-time speakers, I have Mayor Eisenberger, please.
So in the same vein, actually, I was going to reflect on some of the same things. In fact, Luc Pachoni actually made a career out of advocating the Erase Program throughout the country and throughout North America. In fact, it was so, so well-received. So it was a great program, it has done great work in our community, and, you know, deferring taxes to inspire development is a smart move, because, you know, in time, we get the tax benefit on properties that otherwise may not, may not get developed at all. So a good program. I just have some specific questions on your recommendations.
Please.
And, you know, some of them are kind of wide open, so additional administrative requirements regarding submissions and enactment of, so you're looking at approval for a lot of these recommendations, but they're not very specific. So are there, you know, let me turn to you recommending eligible costs be added to the Erase Study Grant and Redevelopment Program to cover designated substances and hazards. So do you have a breakdown of kind of how those costs are, what those costs are and how they're going to be employed? And is that something that maybe should be shared with committee and council?
Edward?
Through the Chair to the Mayor, certainly, we, through the consultation period, heard strongly about those requirements for the designated substances and hazardous material to be included. It will be an eligible cost added to both the study grant and the redevelopment grant. Are you looking for how we break down return of payments, grants versus loans? Because, I mean, that's within the document. And when we talked of the additional administration requirements, those are really tightening up of those submission requirements to make sure that we ask the right questions, to make sure we're getting the best value through the process. So it's more in terms of scrutiny at the application stage to make sure that we have the information there. So not only can we make sure that it's a success, but that we can obviously report back on that success. So it's really that level of scrutiny in terms of the additional submission requirements.
Okay, and so additional eligible costs that you're adding to the Erase Study Grant, what additional costs are you talking about? The ones identified in here, those designated substances, hazardous material survey, industrial office reuse, those are the additional costs that can be applied for through the grant?
Through the Chair to the Mayor, that's correct. And strictly speaking, I mean, you know, we're really talking about the prevalence of asbestos when we do have those study grants and the remediation requirements thereof. So we've apportioned those to the older industrial area and for institutional and heritage, so designated heritage structures only. Once again, when we had that stakeholder consultation, we heard quite clearly that, you know, continuing now and trying to evolve the successful program to include those matters was an important component.
So if I'm reading this correctly, so as I recall, the original Erase Program was predominantly focused on contaminated land, not necessarily buildings per se, but land, you know, gas stations, former gas stations, those kinds of contaminated sites that needed remediation before they could build on them. So what you're, what I'm reading here, what I'm hearing from you, is that you're adding potentially contaminated buildings that could be repurposed, and things like asbestos and other things that might be inherent in the building that would be considered contaminated before it can be reused. You're adding that as a component of the grant?
Through the Chair to the Mayor, correct, and for those instances I mentioned. So for the older industrial area and for former institutional buildings and for designated heritage structures only.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Again, a great program. It's clearer to me now how we're proceeding. I think adding, adding buildings that have challenges, you know, environmental challenges is probably a wise thing to do, and that certainly would help, you know, repurpose a lot of buildings that otherwise might not be touched by anyone, quite frankly. So I really support this program, I think it's worth doing. But having a review of the brownfield sites in the city is not a bad idea. That review was done in the context of the expansion of the Airport Employment Growth District. Inherent in that entire document was actually a brownfields review, so that, we may not have to redo it, quite frankly. We could probably use that document because that wasn't that long ago. But the complete review was done because the debate at the time was, do we need, do we need to take up Greenfield, or, you know, can we rely solely on brownfield? So there was quite an exhaustive assessment done at that point. So we may not have to reinvent the wheel to get at least an update as to where we are today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First-time questioner, commenter, councillor Skelly, please. You just took yourself right off there, councillor. Press your request again. I was ahead of you, councillor Skelly.
So good at this. Thank you, through the Chair. Good morning, Edward. Great program, just wanted to go through the map. Are there certain hotspots in the city that are really contaminated and require some incredible amount of funds to clean them? If you can, you go to the map, if you don't mind, please.
Through the Chair to the councillor, certainly, we recognize that there will be parts within the designated areas that are more contaminated than others. Usually, the initial phase study will recognize former uses and the potential for that greater level of contamination, and that goes forward in terms of the study grant and the cost then that would be coming through the redevelopment grant. So, I mean, at this point in time, we don't have, I believe, a city survey that has those areas as hotspots, but certainly when independent development applications come forward, the kind of chronology and history of the site is examined and the potential is drawn from that.
Through the Chair, how much is remediation? Is there a way of putting dollar value on it? I mean, what kind of dollars are we talking about?
Through the Chair to the councillor, it's a difficult question to answer. Obviously, depends on what the current use of the property is, what the future use of the property is. There's regulations to how quote-unquote "clean" the property has to be for that future use. And obviously, the level of contamination is a variant too, so it's difficult. I mean, I can look to the panel in terms of an average cost that we've had, but like I said, it does take a rather significant variation depending on all those parameters.
Through the Chair, have you seen anyone who's interested in housing use the Erase Program? It's housing component, or is it, because of the level of contamination, is it possible to remediate it to the point where it's healthy enough, clean enough to have any sort of housing?
Through the Chair to the councillor, absolutely. So residential is obviously the most sensitive land use, and obviously, the requirements under the ministerial regulations for remediation are most significant in those instances. But absolutely, yes, we have partaked in those development applications and assisted with the residential introduction within former commercial and even in some instances, former industrial sites.
Edward, councillor Skelly, Judy would like to offer a comment if she could, please. Judy?
Hi, thank you. It's, just want to add to Ed's comment in terms of answering your question about the average cost of a remediation, and he's correct that it really depends on the site and the use. But if we look at the 20 completed projects to date, we approved grant funding of just under 9.6 million. So you can say over those 20 projects, it cost us 9.6 million in foregone tax revenue. So that gives us an idea of how much those 20 projects cost.
Thanks, Judy. Councillor?
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Through the Chair, my last question is, can you see this formula being applied elsewhere across the city?
Through the Chair to the councillor, so it is eligible throughout the urban area. In terms of contemplation for the rural area, I mean, I don't believe we've undertaken that exercise, based on, you know, the development pressures being different, and obviously the provincial legislation that exists in the rural area. But it is applicable citywide, so this is a community improvement plan that is citywide, is one of, the only city improvement plans that is citywide. So it is eligible throughout the urban area.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Skelly. No further first-time requesters, two second-time requesters. Councillor Farr, please.
Yeah, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm sure you'll agree, this is a stimulating conversation and an important topic, and good questions on both sides of the argument. And I just have a few follow-ups from what I've heard. And if you could go to this slide, Edward, where, and Judy just referenced the 9.5, almost 9.6 in ERG grant funding, that list, so we're absolutely clear, because while Judy just mentioned that, the next bullet is important. That's 100, so that 9.6 resulted in 116 million in actual construction value? Could that be right?
Through the Chair to the councillor, correct.
So through you, that's an 11.1 ratio for every city buck, 11 bucks back through you, Chair, is that correct?
Through the Chair to the councillor, that's correct.
Okay, excellent. Can you go to the next slide? Assessment value of completed Erase Grant projects. So if we're looking at the red line at the bottom, had no Erase Grants been offered, we would have stuck around with that 20,000 mark, is that correct? So that green, the biggest line, represents the increase in assessment value because the projects went forward? Is that right, through you, Chair?
Through the Chair to the councillor, that's correct.
And those are in millions of dollars? Through you?
Through the Chair to the councillor, correct.
And the next slide, annual property taxes, which was a good comment earlier. It's the red line, property tax increase due to general increase of the market. Had we not completed the Erase Grant projects and that larger green line didn't exist, it would have sort of stuck around with just the market value increases, a million, but now it looks like it's, is that through you, Chair, four, 4 million because of this grant program?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
Okay, and I'm glad councillor Skelly brought up a very good point. I mean, this is fantastic stuff. The planning policies that have changed, councils of present and past, and we can focus, I know, obviously, West Harbour, Pier 8, with some exciting things happening there, these are former industrial brownfields. Council in its wisdom of past and present continued to support a use from industrial to commercial residential. And I know we couldn't put a number on it earlier, but it's a great ratio when you're changing a brownfield industrial site from industrial development to residential development. Do we know any, through you, Chair, percentages? We know that it's most difficult as far as a transition goes, which is why these conversations happened way back in the 90s in the first place. But do we know, can we put a percentage on it at the very least?
Through the Chair to the councillor, once again, it's difficult because it depends on the ultimate residential use, if it's high density, medium density, low density, but certainly going from industrial to residential is a very significant increase. I don't want to throw a percentage out there because, just in case it's far from being accurate, and I'm just looking to the panel to see if there's any suggestion of a percentage, but I'm just reluctant at this point, other than to say very significant.
It comes, of course, at a great cost for us to see our visions of past and present realized at former brownfields, and we're doing what we should be doing, undoubtedly. And we go through great expense outside of, you know, what we offer in terms of incentives with just OMB appeals and the many millions of dollars by now to make our visions reality, and that sound planning principles and policies for this and any other city, especially when you talk about waterfront development. When I last checked, by the way, and I heard someone else talk about it, with Neil Everson, just probably about a year before he retired, and he was such a great guy, talked a lot about hitting singles versus home runs to succeed in this city. Another thing he was a big proponent of was the expansion of the Red Hill Industrial Park and the Ancaster Industrial Park. And he often argued it was because we had very limited options as it related to brownfield sites in our traditional industrial area. So to entice businesses, we had to expand Greenfield Industrial Park. So to entice businesses, we had to expand greenfield industrial parks. And the last I checked, while I can't remember the number, there were some, this was post-Stelco, and it was just post-Stelco, I might add, but they were so small that they weren't a big enough attraction to bring in the kind of companies we were trying to, the Maple Leafs and the Canadian Breds and so forth. So I just wanted to offer that, and I don't think, I'm very supportive of getting an update on that, and I don't think it'll be too difficult to do. And my guess is that, saving except for Stelco, we continue to see a decline. Parish and Heimbecker is an example where it was a deserted industrial site and now sees... Yeah, five seconds. One final question to Mike Zagarick, if we can get an update, because somebody was asking about where we are on, whether we need to do reviews on our incentive programs, but I think we're already in the process. So if you could update us here and now instead of, you know, instead of, we continue to ask the question, but I think there's movement in those areas through you.
Counselor Farr, since I'm in the chair, I will operate this month with reasonableness, so you may continue. General Manager Zagarick, please.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, as part of the scope of work for the, for staff as working through our DC Steering Committee is there will be a review of the development charge policies, which include the DC exemptions. I believe we have a total of 21 discretionary and statutory exemptions that will be reviewed as part of our DC bylaw, and that will come before council prior to July of 2019.
Okay, thank you. And as noted and as per tradition, we ratified this particular recommendation, these recommendations here today at our next council meeting, and as per tradition, in five years, we'll review again. So I'm hopeful we can move forward. I thank again, Edward, for the presentation, and again, good questions and dialogue on both sides of this issue.
Thank you, Counselor Farr. Last second-time commenter, Counselor Ferguson, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to put a motion and just have some brief comments on it. You permit me to? So moved by myself, seconded by Counselor...
How about Counselor Ferguson? Can we receive the presentation first? Let's deal with 7.1 first. Could I then come to you after that, please, for your separate motion?
I'm at your...
Thank you for your cooperation, Counselor Ferguson. Much appreciated. I will come back to you. No further commenters' questions. Moved to receive Edward's presentation, Counselor Collins, Counselor Farr, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 7.1 is before you. What's your pleasure? Counselor Collins, Counselor Farr. Counselor Farr to move, Counselor Collins to second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Ferguson, you may now put your motion for direction, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. So moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek, that the staff report back on brownfield inventory over the past 10 years, factoring in the province backstopping the cleanup of the Stelco lands. So that's my motion. I'd just like to speak to it. First of all, I want to add to the list of accolades for Neil Everson. He was a big advocate for this program and did great work. Now, if we can just get Cormont Road built, which we've been working on for 10 years, AKA the Neil Everson Way, it would be increased, open up another 60 acres of industrial land that's in huge demand right now, and I think the Valerie Group could sell out tomorrow if we just get that darn road built, but we can't figure that part out. Just saying. The next thing I want to make is that, so question the Erase Program is good, that's why I supported this motion. It did its trick, but at the end of the day, you know, I was really interested in the War II Counselor's math, his new math. If you could, I guess, you can't put that slide back up again on the $9 million.
Quickly, please, Edward. We're all fixated on that wonderful 11 to 1 ratio, and Counselor Ferguson wants to speak to that again, please.
I just want to understand this new arithmetic or new math.
There we are.
Okay, so the taxpayers give up almost $10 million of new tax revenue, which I think Mike would add, bring our assessment up, which we're always puzzled about, the poor assessment numbers kicking up with the billion dollars in building permits. That would bring up about, reduce taxes on the levy about 1.5% if that $9 million was coming into the tax revenue. Once again, you don't need to answer that, just saying, but it is revenue that we would have had on our tax bill if we hadn't done the program, which was a good program, was initiated. The $116 million is not coming back into the city. That was money that was spent by a developer, building, doing the construction of the building. So it's not a 11 to 1 ratio because you're looking at tax revenue forfeited versus what somebody else is spending on their building, and so it's an apples-to-orange comparison. And the next point I want to make is that I would love to get this inventory, and this is one of the main reasons I'm putting this motion up, to ask staff report back. We're in significant discussions, particularly in the rural area, and there's arguments both ways on the production of cannabis. And a lot of us have suggested, why can't they build in brownfields rather than prime acre cultural land since they grow cannabis in buildings, being greenhouses or these bunker buildings? Seems to be the two ways done. Before I go and speak to the community about that suggestion, because our brownfields have water, have hydro, and don't need an open field to grow this because they have to put a building up, I would like to know what the inventory is before I can promote it, saying, get out and take a look at our brownfields and do your cannabis construction out there. So I don't know whether there's 50 acres or 500 acres left that's available for any potential investor to grow recreational cannabis, should that become legalized. So that's the main reason why I'm asking for this staff report back, so I have that information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved and seconded, all understood. Staff understand what you're taking under advisement to report back. Director Glenn Norton, please. Glenn?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, through you to the counselor, what we can report back is the total area of the brownfields. What we can't do is produce a map and label brownfields. Property owners are very sensitive about having their property labeled. That's why we stopped the inventory system that we started a few years ago. It takes their value down. So we can come back with an area number, and as mentioned previously, part of the issue with, I think Counselor Farr mentioned it, part of the issue is so many of the blocks are small that are in that inventory. So if we said the number is 200 acres, that won't help you very far because you don't know if that's six sites or if that's 200 sites. So it will have its limitations. We will give you what we can, but it will have its limitations for your discussion purposes.
Counselor?
So what I want, Glenn, is I think you know where I'm trying to get to. If they're little gas station parking lots, no, they're no darn good to grow cannabis, but can, you'll use to break it down to us by size. Half an acre, 10 acres, 20 acres, and that's probably, 20 acres would be adequate to grow cannabis if that's one of the uses that we can...
That's what we could do. If you could identify what the minimum size is, we could certainly go through and tell you how many parcels reach that minimum size.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You want both the last 10 years before and after, what's left, as well specifically for that specific issue? Right. I recall there were other factors why the cannabis growers wanted, if you will, the more cleaner, greener area, but so be it. It's understood. All in favor? On Counselor Ferguson's motion, seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek. Any opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Ferguson, that was one of the weakest supports I've ever heard, but you got it. Okay, under eight, under discussion items, 8.1 through to 8.4, I'm going to ask staff who have authored each report just to give a quick overview, please. 8.1. Carlo Gordi, Carlo, just a quick overview, please, of 8.1. Are we okay? Okay, moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Farr. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 8.2. Which one, Counselor?
As I said in my earlier statement, in 7.1 is that I wanted to ask the question for 8.1.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Counselor Farr and Green. Counselor Brenda Johnson, I remembered that. Please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So through you to, I'm sorry, Jeff?
Carlo, close.
Carlos. Sorry about that. My hinter over here was wrong. When I look at the map for the remediation, it encompasses the entire urban boundary for Bimrock. We've had discussions about extending the BIA. We're in the process right now of trying to get a BIA in Bimrock. We are missing a significant amount of commercial property in Bimrock to include into the BIA. So that's everything that is north of Maggie Johnson slash Fall Fairway to Cemetery Road. We've got Armstrong's Feed that are going to be a huge home hardware. We have O'Neill's Equipment that are included in that, but they're not in the BIA catchment area. So I'd really like to direct staff to make sure that that is included in the geographical area so that when we go out this summer to get a BIA established, that those properties specifically are included.
Carlo, can you take that under advisement? Get back to the counselor, please.
Through the chair, yes, we can.
Thank you, and we've met with Greg McDonald over this before, so I just wanted to make sure that this is consistent messaging. Thank you.
Terrific.
8.2, sir.
So now back to 8.1. It was by Counselor Green, Counselor Farr reinforcing. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 8.2 is actually a committee report. What's GIC's pleasure? Mayor Eisenberger, moved. Counselor Vanderbeek, second. 8.2, one second, please. Counselor Farr.
Very quickly, as related, if we could forward this to the diocese of the Catholic Church here in Hamilton, and we recently had a meeting in the North End at St. Lawrence, and there's current inventory challenges. The diocese was well represented with the speaker from Kitchener, and there's some concern about the lack of parishioners, and so there was clearly an item two of this report, someone from our West Harbor Growth Department making a presentation. It might be, in fact, I would recommend that that presentation be forwarded to the appropriate parties that can actually get the contact information to our staff to send that along, because a big part of the conversation in the North End in their bid, and hundreds have arrived, were to save their church. Quite obviously, anybody in any neighborhood would want to do the same. The argument was that the area is growing exponentially in the next five to 10 years, and obviously, and their own finance team with the Catholic Church has a ratio that shows what that means in terms of growth in the congregation. So it might be helpful to actually add valid stats to that point that was made, that valid point that was made at the community meeting. So if appropriate, through direction, can we have whatever, I'm aware of this report that went to this committee, if that report could also be forwarded to the Catholic Diocese, I would appreciate it.
Stephanie, between yourself and, I'm just making clear, Counselor Farr, you want the report forwarded to the parishes or to the diocese?
To the Hamilton Diocese.
I'm sure we can, Stephanie, find an address for that or the appropriate person?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I will definitely check with Lisa. The report doesn't show a report went forward at all, but we will find what happened and we will get it to the...
We want to make sure Bishop Crosby is satisfied and happy, Counselor Farr. Very well put. Thank you. Okay, 8.2, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. That was Counselor Farr, Counselor Green again. 8.3, corporate strategy, growth initiatives, long-term sustainability. I'm at your hands. If you don't want a staff overview, I'm at your, in your hands. Moved by Counselor Farr, seconded by the mayor. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 8.4, Canadian Country Music Week. Counselor Pearson will move it. One second, please. Mayor Eisenberger.
Yep, so moving is fine. I think it's a great opportunity for us to kind of shift gears and appeal to the Canadian Country Music event. I had the opportunity to meet with their board. They were in town the other day, and certainly they're anxious and eager to have Hamilton be considered, and so I think this is a great kind of transfer. I do want to remind that $300,000 will be pursued from other levels of government, so it's not the 550 total that we're talking about here, it's more 250, and a worthy investment in some great events that I think are well-received in our community and provide economic spinoff benefits throughout. So I'm very supportive, I'll second the motion.
And one second, please. Thank you, Mayor Eisenberger. Counselor Skelly, please.
Just curious, what the, through the chair, what's the date? What week is it?
Carrie or Anna, please, come to the microphone.
March?
What's the date of the event?
It will be September of 2019. The exact dates in September have not been set yet by the CCMA.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, was there an opportunity to work with Art Supercrawl? Supercrawl is in September as well, is it?
Through the chair, yes, it is. And for the 2018 event, we're working closely with Supercrawl. The main event for CCMA's is the weekend of September 6th to 9th, and Supercrawl will be the following weekend, so we have two major events bookending a week of music here in Hamilton.
Through the chair, would it be, I guess the date for Supercrawl is already established, but would it not be great to have the two events at the same time or not?
Through the chair, no. In discussions with Supercrawl and the CCMA's, it was decided that our best way to leverage audience was to bookend the two and have them concurrent rather than at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Skelly, and I believe it was moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by the mayor, on 8.4, country music. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 8.5, from the Affordable Housing Site Selection Subcommittee, a new report is there in front of you. What's the committee's pleasure? Moved by Counsel, moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Pearson. If I could just, Counselor Aiden Johnson, if you would just, previous deputy mayor, take the chair, please.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And I just want to, I'm supportive, Mr. Chairman. Therefore be resolved on page two, under the C, D, and E, the transferring of some small portions of land beside Macassa Lodge over to the small, little city housing Hamilton complex, two-story apartment complex, a little cluster there. So because unfortunately I couldn't attend the committee meeting, it sounds like this is all part and parcel of allowing several options that I've been working on through the support of the City Housing Hamilton Board, Mr. Chairman, to allow for some possible existing options, new options, to be forthcoming, but to have the additional open swath of land currently beside Macassa Lodge to be part of that future discussion. Mr. Chairman, is there, through you to either Edward or the chair of the Affordable Housing Selection Site Committee, I just want to ensure that my interpretation is accurate and correct. Just, I just need some affirmative. I'm seeing affirmative nods from Edward and the chair, Counselor Collins. Edward, Mr. Chairman, through you?
Through the chair to the counselor, correct. There is that exploration of options which is inherent in the process.
Terrific. That's great. Thank you very much. I'll take the chair back. Counselor Johnson, I'm back in the chair. Counselor Collins, the chair of this committee?
Just to answer your question, I think it was, it's a difficult discussion to have with residents, certainly at Macassa, to talk about, you know, I know you've had ambitious plans there to either modernize the buildings that are currently on site that in many cases don't have elevators, and we have seniors living in those small buildings. My grandmother formerly lived in them, so they're nice apartments, they're small apartments, but they're very dated, and so it's tough to have the discussion about what happens to the site next when City Housing Hamilton doesn't own the site. So I know that, you know, we have a very close working relationship with city staff, but technically, we don't own the property. So the transfer that is referenced here is in sync and in keeping with your discussions that you've had, I think, preliminary discussions with your residents and the other properties that are referenced there as well, the one that Counselor Farr and city staff have had discussions about at Bay and Cannon that are also contained here, sorry, and King William. Again, difficult for city housing to have discussions with community and residents when we don't own those properties. So this just formalizes that and allows us in a better way to communicate with residents, and in the case of Jamesville, to have some real meaningful discussions now about where people might move to once the Jamesville property, once there's resolution to the property and we find out who the successful applicant is through the private process that we're making our way through.
Chair Collins, thank you so much for that reassurance and raising my comfort level. Okay, 8.5 is in front of you? Oh, I'm sorry, well, you just, you just put in the request.
I did.
Counselor Farr, I watch my menu panel so diligently. Counselor Farr?
Just to thank you, because you've been a champion on this parcel for some time and the many other counselors who worked with Ray Kessler and other staff, and of course, our chairman of the Site Selection Committee, who are identifying sites across the city of Hamilton, and to help us address, and you could just read the whereas is the many needs as it relates to creating housing opportunities, and I know this is one that you've been a champion of for some time, so I know we appreciate that, and to the rest of the members of the Site Selection Subcommittee, Counselor Pearson, Conley, and the good work that the staff have done with us to date, this is progress and an important report to approve here today.
Thanks for your kind words, Counselor Farr. Moved by the chair, Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Farr. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. We're going to, no motions. We're going to, no motions, a notice of motion has been placed before us by Councillor Aidan, Councillor Farr, you've pressed your request, well, you're on here.
I am pressing...
Councillor Aidan Johnson, would you press, you're on.
I think I'm still on, actually, I never went off.
You never went off.
I don't get ready, I stay ready.
Councillor Aidan Johnson, you have a notice of motion.
So, motion for waiver, seconded by Councillor Farr.
Everybody has it in front of them, all in favor of waiving? Any opposed? That was about as weak as Councillor Ferguson's...
You know what, the rules have been waived, Mr. Chair, in my view. I am moving along to my motion, that $30,000 be funded through 2018 Ward 1 Area Rating Fund to Hamilton Public Library to complete the renovations and physical accessibility features at Locke Library, and if I may speak to this?
Please.
This is a project developed and approved through Ward 1 Participatory Budgeting two years ago. Locke Street Library is going to close for six months, starting next month for the renovations, they're just about to start the renovations of the front of the building. Last week, Chief Librarian Tackala came to me and said they're $30,000 short, now that the final calculations have been done. Apparently, Chief Librarian Tackala is going to the board, I think Thursday, to talk about a chunk he wants from the HPL board, and he needs a chunk, or I should say has requested a chunk, from the Ward 1 Area Rating Reserve to complete the package that he needs to make sure that this really beautiful project is complete and fulsome. And really what's on the line is the accessibility features, we're making the bathroom at Locke Library accessible for the disabled, which I think is a very important cause, and so this really is completion of an already approved participatory budget project. In other words, council has already allocated money from Ward 1 Area Rating for the Locke Street Library reconstruction, and this is a little bit more, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Councillor Aidan Johnson. Stephanie, before I go to Councillor Skelly?
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, as this deals with the school, or, sorry, the library board as well, I just want to possibly add a subsection B, in case there's any agreements or documents that need to be signed, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute any required agreements and ancillary documents with such terms and conditions in form, in a form satisfactory to the city.
Very prudent, Stephanie. Councillor, are you willing to accept that as a B part? Seconded by Councillor Farr, on my speaker's list, Councillor Skelly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and perhaps just a friendly reminder to Councillor Johnson and maybe Councillor Pearson, that, does the library have any sort of sound system at all? Do you know?
Oh, curious question. Good question? I don't think I...
If it does, and through the chair, just a reminder that there are grants available, and I'm sure staff would love to, while you're doing this, perhaps we could look at including a hearing loop in the, in the library as well, and if not, if it doesn't work, fine, but if there is an opportunity to do so, I know that there is funding available through the province for the loop.
Thanks for the reminder, Councillor Skelly. We'll leave it to our two reps on the board, Councillor Pearson and Councillor Partridge. Councillor Pearson, on that point?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you to Councillor Skelly, I'll certainly raise it, and the board does meet this evening, so I'll take this with me and raise it, we do have microphones similar to what we use in room 242 here at City Hall, we have similar systems in our boardroom, but I'm not sure what's in the facilities themselves, so I'll certainly bring that to the board's attention. Thank you.
Councillor?
Through the chair, councillor, if and when, when you are meeting with the library members, just if they need any further information, there is funding, there are different, different products, of course, there is the one loop that can go around the room, but just a reminder to my colleagues, if anybody's sitting around a table and they deal with people who have any sort of a hearing impairment, a lot of our elderly population does, you can actually get a table as well with hidden microphones in it, so it works in many rooms without having to do the entire room as well.
Thank you, councillor, and Councillor Aidan Johnson, moved, seconded by Councillor Farr, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Well done, Councillor Aidan Johnson. General information, item 11.1, to remove items, Roman numerals 1, 2, and 3 under A, may I have a motion for this, please? Councillor Farr, seconded by Councillor Green, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Private and confidential, Stephanie, the closed session minutes of February 7th, may I have a move? Councillor Collins, seconded by Councillor Vanderbeek, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Now with this long diatribe, bear with me, members of committee, may I have a motion to move into closed session respecting items 12.2, 12.3, pursuant to section 8.1, subsections B and D of City's procedural bylaw 14-300, section 239, paragraph 2, subsections B and D, Ontario Municipal Act 2001, as amended, as the subject matters pertain, personal matters identifiable, including city employees, labor relations, or employee negotiations. Could I now, I do this for the record, so nobody could question or challenge, could I now ask that the public and any staff, or they still would probably, who are not required to be in the closed session minutes, please exit the chambers, take in all of your personal belongings with you, members of public will be invited to return to hear any further deliberations upon reconvening in open session, indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of the white noise. The committee will, in the event they are closed session for more than 30 minutes, wait up to five minutes upon reconvening in open session before proceeding, to provide members of public and media to return. Moved to go in camera?
We don't need to.
You don't want, you're, you're okay with 12.2 and 12.3?
12.2, I'm fine with it.
Well, how about 12...
There's no, there's no...
Folks, I'm in your hands.
I'm standing on the microphone.
Okay, so if we don't want, there's no desire to move in camera, so Stephanie, if we're dealing with 12.2 and 12.3, action items in open session?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, if you go to your roadmap to the open session portion, the resolution for 12.2 to read out in public is there, as well as for 12.3.
Okay, so it's all understood? Now, so we're still in open session discussing whether or not to go in camera. Councillor Brenda Johnson?
I agree. So I have some questions of 12.3, I've asked Mike to give those to me ahead of time, because it does deal with, with increases of taxes, and I just want to be sure that the areas that are getting increased are the ones that should be increased and not the ones that should not be.
All right.
So that's my dilemma right now, and I was hoping to get a map so I could get a fulsome understanding on this. So do we have the map available? You can just zap it, and everybody just take a five-minute break, and then we'll decide whether or not to go into camera.
Hold on, Michael, please.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the staff who would have that information, unfortunately, the one staff member is away and the other two are in training, I've sent an email asking if we can receive that information prior to the end of GIC, but I'm not sure that we'll be able to provide the councillor with a outline of the properties that would be affected. I think that's what the councillor is trying to assess, is what properties would be affected with the potential changes.
Thanks, General Manager. Councillor, could I humbly suggest, why don't we table 12.3 to council, leave it as an in-camera, and between now and then, see if you're satisfied with the information you get, or you can raise it in-camera at council?
If we can, that would be great.
Stephanie?
Stephanie, if we can, just, all I need is a couple of days just to go through this, I got a notice of this yesterday afternoon, and even then, we weren't getting the questions answered.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it would be referred to council.
Referred to, how's that, councillor, is that fair? Gives you another week, then?
That's good. Sorry, everybody.
So we're not going in camera, I read all that for nothing. So now, in open session? Nope, we don't, hold it, hold it, Mr. Mayor, hold it. 12.2, mover and seconder for 12.2, Steffi, do I need to read out 12.2 in open session, while we're moving and seconding, should I do that for the record?
Yes, please, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I should. This is the legal services staffing, that the city solicitor be authorized, directed to extend the current temporary contracts for positions shown below beyond the completed 24 months with no impact to the levy, as the positions are currently funded through the 18 legal services operating budget. Roman numeral 1, two solicitors, Roman numeral 2, law clerk, Roman numeral 3, one legal